Good evening, everybody. It is April 29th, 2025, and this is a special meeting of the Halifax Select Board that I'm calling to order at 6:01 PM. Thank you for everyone who has joined us. This is an off-cycle meeting, but things were getting piled up and we had a lot of stuff to talk about. We do have the entire board here with Lori Markajani coming in remotely. We also have in the room Tim Jones, Kyle Barnesworth, Mike Fornier, Nancy McCray, and Sue Kelly. We have online with us in addition Emily Dow, who is going to be taking minutes for us, and I do expect a couple of other people to join at various points tonight. First thing we do is changes and additions to the agenda, and I need to add under Old Business, the recycling request for proposal. Because I got new information on that today.
So where's that?
It's gonna go under Old Business, and I'll try to keep it short.
And that's good, because I was adding a quick conversation about just that, so.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I got, I got stuff hot off the press on that today.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm gonna move the little thing away from the pause recording so that I don't mess that up. So under Old Business, our first thing that we have here is to sign the garage yard lease to Green Mountain Power. And we have gotten today new information with a new exhibit attached that came in from Tim just a little bit ago.
Before we do that, Tim, did you? Let me pull up the last document that we have for the lease.
Sure.
And I want to go through it, and if there's anything that's different, you've got Tim's up at the moment?
I've got his, his new map up.
All I sent was a revision of the map, and so when you respond to Jake, Bill Jacobowski, that I think we're in complete agreement on all the terms, and you had asked me to remove material storage from the public access recycling area, so I just spread it to two other locations where they're already.
So let's see if I can find what I'm looking for, which would be the lease. See if that comes up. There we go, okay. So perhaps what we can do, I circulated this draft to the board in advance of this. Lori, did, I don't know if you were able to take a look at it?
Actually, I wasn't able to open the attachment, or I didn't see it on there, so I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, okay.
It's okay.
Oh, all right, so why don't we go through this and just, this way I can accept, this will be the signable document when we're, when we're there, and then what we'll have to do, Tim, when we talk about make those changes real time. So the first one, this, the yellow part is what Jake suggested, and a concern about accepting certain areas on, I think what he suggested makes sense, because it's certain areas that we have on Exhibit A. I don't have a, Bob Fisher did not look at these two yellow things, but I can't imagine
Yeah.
it would be an issue, so let me do that. Let me accept that change. Then with this part, five areas, and I converted the language to four areas, which were the contractor parking in blue, the bucket truck and trailer parking in green, yellow Conex boxes, and red dumpster staging. Does that match what you've got there, Edie?
Repeat that all again?
Blue contractor parking.
Yep.
Green bucket truck and trailer parking.
Correct.
Yellow Conex boxes and for materials.
Yep.
And red dumpster staging.
Yeah, and so there are also, though, two orange ones still, and they're in different locations that say material storage and reels. And one of them is next to the bucket trucks, and the other one is out by the dumpster staging area.
Did Mike get a chance to look at that? Mike, you might want to come up here and?
Yeah, let me see if I can also display it on the screen.
Oh yeah, if you can display it, that would be great.
Send it back.
Yeah, that's the newest.
That's the thing that just came in.
Yeah, if she can, if Edie can display that, then do you want me to stop sharing at the moment?
It'll take me just a minute to get in, so why don't we keep going and then we'll circle back to that.
So for the moment, I am going to accept this language here until we have something different from you. So I will accept that change. Likewise, here. The premises shall not include the use of any buildings or other facilities, and then we inserted nor shall lessors use at any time impede the access to any building or area used by the public or highway crew, and that's okay with you, right, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good. Accept that. Then this draft note is really my language, because here, and I think I can probably pull this off, right, Tim, the, the draft note for folks in the room was that GMP previously requested a change to the first sentence for certain areas, and I think what we were saying is that, though, this is just saying that the changes that I made were before we received your email and before we received anything from Jake, so I'm gonna just delete that. And this should be, I'll have to renumber all this, because that doesn't make any sense. Save. Oops. Okay, then we get down to the use of premises, and there were four conditions. The first is there should be no storage of hazardous materials on the lease site. The second was Lessee shall keep the lease premises in a clean and orderly condition at all times, removing all garbage and debris from the site. Third, Lessee, and for everyone, Lessee is GMP, and its contractor shall not perform fuel transfers on the lease premises, and then four, Lessee shall not leave leftover utility poles, transformers, wires, or any other used utility facilities on the lease site for more than seven days. And then it looks like what Tim said, unless they are loaded into and kept in roll-off containers, which, this should be will, which will be promptly called away when full, then the intent being that lease premises are maintained in a clean and debris-free condition. I don't know if anybody else has a comment. One of the things that we talked about, Edie, with when we were on the phone with the attorney, was the con, the idea that the Conex boxes, like hazardous material cannot be on the ground.
Correct.
So I thought I saw something from Jake saying, no, used poles are not going in the Conex boxes, and that doesn't make any sense to us.
What he, what he said in there was, what it looked like he said was that they were not going to go in Conex boxes, they were going to go on in open-top roll-offs.
Is that good enough? Is that, is anything touching the ground or runoff water?
It doesn't seem like they would be.
Mike, does that seem reasonable to you?
Boxes attract terminology.
Yeah, that's right, okay. So we can accept this yellow stuff here?
Yeah, I think, can we just put?
Wait, wait, let me get here first before we, let me just do one thing at a time here. Let me just go accept that change. I need to get rid of that yellow highlight. No color. All right, I'll have to get rid of it later.
Okay.
All right, so you wanted to?
I just, yeah, I just think that if we say, I think we need a comma after when full, comma, the intent being, because that's not a sentence on its own.
Being that the lease premises are maintained.
Yes, you can either put parentheses around that last thing, or you could put a comma after when full.
When full, comma, the intent being, I see what you mean, okay.
Yeah, it's more like a clause instead of a full sentence.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it?
All my English teachers.
That's it, sorry, it's gonna take a second, I don't know why it's accept that change. And I'm gonna get rid of this yellow. Okay. Accept that format's good enough for now. Then we get down here to environmental factors. So I guess this is what we have to change at the very end, whether lessor, meaning GMP, is rep and warranting, they've got no knowledge of substances, the very last sentence in red there is that Lessee further agrees, sorry, Lessee being GMP, further agrees that all used poles will be stored only in Conex boxes, so we have to change that, that's
Just say in roll-off containers.
All used poles will be stored only in roll of containers and removed from the site as often as practical, practicable, no used poles will be stored on the grounds. Is that fair enough?
Yeah. And can I just clarify, because this was a paragraph I have?
Yeah, let me just, let me just accept this before we get Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so this, so this one, this, this paragraph has less or, which is us, and then Lessee at the end of it, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, that the lessor is the town of Halifax, representing and warrants that we don't have any, no chemical substance waste identified, is that, was that?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, with that, we had a specific conversation with Attorney Fisher about that, and that's, we're basically saying there's, there's no hazardous material already there. We're also saying that the lessor is responsible for and will conduct investigations and remediation as required, but wait, let me go back and see what he said, because, do you have, do you have his email handy, so I don't have to have six things open?
I don't.
Because I had all three sentences, and he had his rationale, let me find it, sorry. The first sentence is the town representing, it's a clean site, the second sentence is GMP agreeing not to dispose of hazardous materials. So it's the second should be Lessee.
Okay.
Agrees not to dispose, and the third sentence, wait a minute, and the third sentence should change from lessor to Lessee as it's GMP's responsibility, so it's Lessee and Lessee.
Okay, and I didn't see that email, so that's okay.
All right, so it was
So lessor.
This should be Lessee. Do you agree with that, Tim?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, Edie. Lessee is responsible for all that stuff, and Lessee agrees that used poles, okay.
Okay.
That's that, we're clipping along, folks. Then that should be it, now we get to Exhibit A in the lay-down area, so this we should be able to change. Because I said we're in agreement of certain things, and then we're not in agreement, so what I'm gonna do is get rid of this, right, this language?
Yeah.
We're gonna delete that?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't matter to?
Oh, that's kind of the body of the email you sent, I guess, when you sent, you sent back to Jake or something, sort of.
Yes, that was in there, but it was also, it was also there, so we don't, we don't need to have it on Exhibit A, because Exhibit A is going to be whatever it is. Accept deletion. Accept. All right, I'll have to move that up. Somehow we lost the picture, so I have to insert the picture.
I'll share the, I'll share the latest picture with you. I'm just gonna mention to Melissa and David Jones, Star Six will mute yourself if you don't have a mute option on your screen, and thank you, we'll let you unmute when it's the appropriate time. Okay.
Want me to stop sharing?
I am going to go ahead and continue and share.
But do I need to stop sharing?
It's, I think I'm overriding you right now.
Okay, okay, that's, that's easy, good. See ya.
Adios. There we go. Okay, so the, I'm gonna try to blow it up a little bit here.
Mike, can we see this?
So I, I took away this piece. We had stood out there, I, I misunderstood that we could have some stuff here, so we'll just have real storage next to our bucket trucks, next to our dumpster, it's, it's consumable material, so it's not like we're gonna be bringing lots and lots of stuff, it's really just put some reels on the ground, and so we can take them during the course of the business day, so.
Say something quickly?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm under the impression, and I believe some of the slackboard was too, that this original price was for the trucks and dumpsters, and the Conex boxes behind the salt shed without adding all their trenching stuff.
All the PLC stuff?
Yeah, the, the conduit.
Yeah, because the 1,200 a month, it was, was, it was a much smaller, you know, it's a much smaller area. And, and I know we're gonna talk separately, so I just want to sort of get this out there, I know we're gonna talk separately about the Zero Outage Initiative project. And I know, Tim, you had some, some, some comments on the sort of the gravel part of it, and I think we have to look at those two agreements kind of together. We can't do one without the other, because in this one, we sort of, and this is, I'll say this is my view, and others can, can, you know, please say this, I think, is you're getting an awful lot for 1,200 a month. As far as space-wise and everything, I don't know what, you know, you guys have done with other towns. But this is probably double the size, originally when we talked about the 1,200 a month, it was really the green bucket truck area and the material storage, because it was sort of where the DV fiber guys were.
Yep.
Right, so that's kind of it, and so now it's sort of spread around, sort of all over the place, which is fine, you gotta do what you gotta do. But that was the 1,200, the 1,200 a month, and then now when we're talking about the zero outage, and you're right, so we'll have that conversation. That's kind, that's a lot of expense for us, all the gravel, everything that has to get replaced, so I sort of feel like we're, you know, we're at the end of the, we're at the end of the line for getting everything fixed. And I, I just, I'm not convinced that we're being compensated as well as we could be, given, I think, what, what we agreed to, at least on the, on the gravel last fall, and perhaps even what, what other towns have have benefited from, and I don't know if it's because they were earlier in the process, but that, that was just sort of my, as I'm sort of looking at both of these things together.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think the $1,200 is sort of a benchmark that we have been paying, so.
Okay.
In honesty, standing out there on the ground, I don't think I've taken more than what we talked about out there, and Mike did mention that we could have, you know, personal vehicles from the contractors here. It was mentioned that, you know, the, the space around the public recycling dumpsters could also be a spot, so all I did after today, when you said I can't be there, was just, you know, basically shrink, you know. We'll just fit it together with the space that you already gave us, so not trying to gain any more ground, or I just took away from a spot I thought I heard it would be okay to put some reels and just, no, we'll just, we'll consume the same space, so if, if.
When I was saying that, I was thinking like down the road, if you were gonna revisit this situation if and when you were bringing the trenching stuff in.
Yeah. Which we haven't yet, and so that's a discussion that we still have to have internally at GMP, is where they're gonna go when they get here, so there might not be room for everything that we want to do here, you know, so it just comes down to bucket trucks, what's in there, but that's the space, anyway, I tried to just play back the space we said.
Yeah, and, 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 and yes, we did talk about all of that, because I was with, with you guys, so yes, we did, I think, I'm going back to the 1,200 was when we very, very first talked about it, and there were a handful of trucks. And DV fiber was still there, there were like, you know, six or eight or 10 trucks, and like, that was it. And then that was the 1,200, and then we were like, okay, what do you need, and we never kind of went back and calibrated the 1,200 to the area, so that, that was just my observation, and whatever the board wants to do, I'm gonna be, you know, perfectly fine with, but I just wanted to point that point that out, and I don't know if there's any wiggle room on your guys' end on, on that, and then obviously we're gonna talk about the Zero Initiative.
Sure, yeah, I mean, again, I think we suggested, you said suggest a price, and so that's about the price we've been paying, if the town feels like more compensation is due, absolutely, you know, if it's 1,500, I don't, I don't know, I can't, you know, tell you what you need to to recover, so to speak, but in terms of just, you know, footprint, so that was the offer that we made, and, and then we are gonna maintain it ourselves, so we'll plow it, we'll crush our own reels, we'll do all of the, the handling, so the 1,200 is just, just for the real estate. I think in other towns, there's been a little bit of a combined you know, in that, and, and we talked out in the field that day, and Mike's not interested in doing that, and that's perfectly fine, well, hire an outside contractor to come and plow, and we'll, we'll manage our own waste streams, so, again, we don't want to take more than, than you want to give us, for sure. So again, I was just trying to play back
Sure.
what I thought we talked about on the ground that day.
Five is still there? No, are they still there?
Which is, was up here, right, so I think.
They are kind of where the bucket.
So I just kind of stopped short of where they were, and Mike had said we, we need to share the space as long as they're there, and.
I mean, they're wrapping up, for the most part, they're only gonna have a couple trucks in, in that four and foot Conex.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, it's, it's kind of late in the game to be talking about changing the number.
Well, I'm just, I'm pointing it out, because we are gonna have a separate conversation when we get to the Zero Outage Initiative.
Right, so if there's more, then that might be different, but I mean, I know the original spot was in a different spot, it wasn't huge, but that wasn't super handy for us, so we decided on these spots. So, I mean, I feel like we need to kind of stick with that for now, unless we're gonna add a bunch of other stuff, which I don't know about that, so.
Trying to get at, it's $1,200 a month, for what, what it is now, is, is fine. In my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board, but when you want to bring in all your other stuff for, for your trenching stuff, I think it should be revisited, you know, not to say you need to pay another $2,000 a month, but $200 or, you know, whatever, and at that time you can look at and say, you know, I'll buy a sand pile, there's just as much room as there is behind the sand shed, if you, there's plenty of room there to use, if you need to use it.
Yeah, I mean, again, if the talent feels like, you know, we're expanding our range and more compensation is due, by all means.
Maybe what, maybe what we do is we have, we stick with this.
Right.
That's the footprint, that's what we have, but then if trenching material comes in, other things, then, then we'll say, okay, we're gonna have to adapt, adapt that, and then adapt the price.
Put an Exhibit A on it and change the price.
Yeah, so let's, let's, that, that, Mike, does that seem reasonable?
And real quick too, Mike, and I know you looked at it, obviously, you were there when they, when they staked it out. That one Conex box material, the yellow box down behind the salt shed, it looks like it's somewhat in that road area where you would get.
It's not, it's more behind.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty much square behind.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, the image is a little older, right, so when I captured it.
We don't use that road anyway, I mean, that's a hall where we dug gravel out over the years, and when that's what we're filling in.
But we need to recalibrate on what we have out there and get rotten, sort of reposition, they're working on another job for us, and so when we do materials for these jobs, is again, we'll just make sure, you know, okay, we're out of the way, we're tucked away, you know.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the revision to the contracts as discussed here, and continue with a $1,200 a month lease agreement with GMP, does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the contract with GMP that we discussed with those revisions for 1,200 a month.
And just to say that was for 13 months, and I know Jake has the check handy, if you don't have it already, so 13 times was 15,600?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, to accept the contract with GMP for the garage lay-down area in the amount of 1,200 a month for 13 months, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five zero, it's unanimous.
Cool.
All right, next up, GMP New Projects.
For that, we'll, we'll have to also have a motion that one of us can sign it, because I'm gonna have to pull that photograph in and create a signable copy. So, or we can, or we can do it.
I think based on the, based on the motion, I can, I can sign it, or you can sign it, I don't think it, I don't think we need to have a separate motion for signatories.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for space to operate.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, so now we go to the
GMP New Zero.
Zero Outage Initiative, ZOI.
Yeah.
All right, so let me reshare. I think. Okay.
So preemptively, I came with, with two versions.
Okay.
One, completely accepted your changes as is. And the second version just has one qualifier under number four, where we're asking if, you know, the, the six inches of new gravel, again, it's, it's part of the calculus of doing our jobs, we're not here to burden the town, so we heard you very clearly, you know, again, this should not encumber the town in any way, based on, you know, even materials purchased, machinery effort. So all we're saying is, since we're doing the baseline in one, all I asked is if when we're saying shall regravel roads with six inches of new three-quarter inch cross gravel, I just put in comma, if returning roads to approved conditions under number one requires, that's all, and so rather than a wholesale condition, like we're gonna do that for all the roads, we're gonna take the opportunity this year to ride out with Mike, look at everything, place boxes, get everything stationed out, look at the condition of the road, and just agree that the finished product you know, is as we start, and what will it take to get there, and so I'm just, you know, just leaving open a possibility that it might not always require, you know, six inches of gravel for, for miles, and I guess that's kind of the calculus we're doing, and but if that's, if that's the way the town wants the road to put back together, again, we're, we're at your mercy in that respect, we, we need to do this job, and, you know. So we, we need to cooperate with the town and, and, you know, have your partnership in that.
And Mike, why don't you here talk about the, the six inches, because this is your request.
Last year when we did Reed Hill, Larrabee, Ballard, and Aldridge, Mike Bernard approved us, at that time, us, to do six inches of gravel, so that's where that all stepped from.
Sure.
And, and I mean, in my opinion, I mean, of course, my opinion ain't what you want to hear anyways, but in my opinion, if you guys are gonna I hate to use this terminology, but tear up our roads to make your structure better, why can't you make our structure better, so we don't have to be down dealing with your stuff and your structure at some point, too? You know, if you put six inches of gravel on it now, once you're done, you know, the road's gonna be pretty good for a few years, where hopefully we don't have to end up, and either one of us end up being anywhere near that.
Sure. Again, is that a showstopper for us? It's just one of those points of qualification where it looks like we're just gonna put the gravel down. I just want some deference to looking at the existing condition and just kind of agreeing before we even put a shovel on the ground, like, this is the way the road looks now. And making sure that we're all in agreement of what it takes to make it look like it was when we started, that's, that's all, and if, but I'm also, I'll sign the agreement as you edit it, and I really appreciate you going through there and putting all that detail in there, so I want the town to be confident that, you know, they're not gonna be encumbered by this, we have a need, obviously, to serve our customers, so.
Can I ask one question, not to overcomplicate this even more than it already is? What's the protocol, plan, however you want to word it, years down the road, if something in this underground happens to happen in a timeframe where we would not, would not let you dig up the road to fix it? So like in the middle of winter, mud season, like, I'm not trying to be smart towards Green Mountain Power, but you know, sometimes they come in here during mud season, turn outage, which I, I totally get, they gotta put the power on.
Sure.
But there's, you know, they could go downstart, down 112, upstart mountain, and cut off, you know, three or four miles of driving on a dirt road, and they go right out stage road, and, and, you know, so I know what their mentality of, not Green Mountain Power, but some of the employees. So it's like, what's the mentality gonna be in 20 years down the road, something under the ground happens to need to be fixed, because it's supplying hundreds and thousands of customers, but we will not let you dig up the road.
Sure. Ever in that instance, or just give them time, so.
Until the road dries up enough, so.
And this is this cable and conduit material, it is insulated, so we have had occasions where we're able to basically run the conductor outside, we can, we could put new conductor, if we found the fault isolated, and we know where it is, we can jump around it, basically, with, with new conductor.
Or that.
Means we can, you know, find a spot to, to put it on the ground and work around the fault area, or we could very quickly.
But you're still gonna be like digging up the road.
Not necessarily, I mean, if we knew where the fault was, and we can isolate it and sectionalize it.
You're talking about a temporary repair, basically.
Yes, yes, we make a temporary repair in that instance.
You have to dig, or you're just talking from like the nearest box, come and do like a, just.
Yeah, so we'd have to see where the fault is, and how, what it affects, how we could sectionalize that, and to your point, you know, basically triage it. Yeah, so we'd have to see where the fault is and how what it affects, how we could sectionalize that and to your point, you know, basically triage it. If if the lights back on and then when it's, you know, the conditions are more favorable.
Go overhead.
Or go overhead, exactly. So there's a way uh around a faulted location. We can put up a couple of poles. No different if a a tree came down and wiped out, you know, three or four.
No, that's that's really the only other thing that I have thought of over the last month, month and a half since we've been talking about this stuff is, you know, I just really would hate to try to plow through a muck hole all winter because two hundred or a thousand or ten thousand customers were without power and we're the ones paying the price all.
But it is a speed to market response to to get the power back on, so we would identify a triage step and and in consultation with the town and um we we'd come up with a remedy.
Yeah, so you could just temporarily put a couple of overheads for, you know, a few months or six months.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, it'd be like if a tree came down and or segments of our line to the ground, just new poles and wire go back up and um that's how we could kind of cut in or at least eliminate a fault until we can do more explore authority.
So I'm gonna bring us back to the conversation about six six inches of gravel or not. Um and just note that I had time to actually reread um the road foreman's meeting notes from February twenty six, twenty twenty five, and there was a comment that for some towns that culverts weren't covered or are buried enough. Um so and that it also mentioned four feet depth may not be enough for two feet in larger diameter culverts. Um so just to kind of put, you know, to to state again, right, what we're trying to do is make sure that when when you guys are buttoned up this project, everybody's happy with with the conditions of the road and we don't have to think about it for, you know, a reasonable period of time. So I know um I know it's a lot because and I was, we were surprised at how much it was last year in terms of getting gravel on those three roads. Um but I'm kind of inclined to say, you know, like that's, those are the, those are the standards that we have, and if that's what we need to make the roads, you know, drivable and have this wonderful addition of more resilient power, um kind of inclined to go with what we had originally. I don't know how other board members feel about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the roads obviously need to be put back to the the same standard or better, not slightly worse, of course.
Yeah.
So yeah, I mean, if in inevitably, whenever you dig a trench, it's easier earlier in the year than later in the year. Last year was kind of late, but whenever you dig a trench in the row, you're always gonna have compaction. You're always gonna have settling of some some amount. And when there's additional material on top to kind of help shim everything, it does help keep it more uneven.
And if that, I mean, that's just a big, this is a huge deal for our town our size where you know, our gravel budget and our road budget is just, it's just so big, right? So you know, any sort of small thing uh can kind of get amplified fairly fairly quickly for us, and especially if it's around work, you know, that you guys have been putting conduit down. Um I mean, I I I don't know, I'm I I think that we talked about the six inches. Um that's you know, other towns got whatever mix of gravel they wanted for their roads, and I don't know how many miles they were. But you know, other towns got what what they bought, they needed to make it, you know, make it you know, every because everybody wants good electricity, not for nothing. You guys have done a great job, right? Because it's it's been awesome.
Mike knows and and word travels. I mean, uh obviously, we were going as we went last year, and so you know, given the benefit of time and planning, we certainly expect this year to be a different experience. So we just really wanna focus our energies on the baseline with Mike, understanding, but we understand where the town comes down with the finished product. Like I said, we're gonna we're gonna agree uh to that. Um but I just wanna make sure that, you know, sort of this uh due diligence on the front end, you know, has some merit as well when we go to put things back together and we're all agreeing that, you know, this is the finished product.
So so what would your, so let's go through this and accept what is acceptable and let's change, let's talk through whatever language you wanna change because these things all have, I'm gonna.
I accepted everything.
All right, so first, let me change that to that. All right, so first, let me accept everything for now. Whoops. Save because who the heck knows? Um as further agreed, so I think that was the date. At least that was the one I found. Make it right up and then. Okay. All right, and then in here, what was the language that you?
I just said, you know, comma after gravel. Um if returning roads to approved conditions under number one requires it.
I don't know, Mike, what do you think? Because that's just, it it's it's a uh y- y- you're closer to the, you know, the roads and what the condition they are in now. Um are there are there any that you think we're gonna be significantly disadvantaged if we don't have this six inch?
Yeah, I think you are gonna have some disadvantage. I I I think you do. I think it should just go with the number one, with the six inches of gravel.
That's kind of what I proposed earlier, so I'm.
For the road surface, right? So but so that there's no change, so so.
I mean, just like Randy said too, is, you know, everything that you do this year, we go and start doing a spring grading like we're doing right now. And there's saddling and there's this with the six inches material, it gives you something to work with.
The buffer.
I change everything back up and.
It's a shim so that when you go back through to grade later on, it it's easier to make everything as one, as you know. Because no matter what, things are gonna settle a little bit, even with all the, you know, compaction.
And I only have one other change, which is materials and matter combined with each other.
Oh, materials and that, yes, they are.
Yeah. All right, do we have a motion to accept the uh what are we calling this one? What's the top of it say?
GMP letter.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um this is a petition uh to the Town of Halifax from the Green Mountain Power as amended.
So so I'll move to accept. Um we're we're gonna call it the Zero Outage Initiative Agreement. Dated. Uh what we got, April twenty nine, twenty twenty five as amended.
Second, do I have a second for that?
One second.
Okay, so for stopping Pike, any further discussion? Lori, any?
No, it seems like you guys have covered everything. Um I don't really have anything to add.
Okay. Mike, you're good?
You're good.
Okay, um then how many people would like to accept the motion to um approve the Zero Outage Initiative with Green Mountain Power? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the motion carries five zero. It's unanimous. All right, next up, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, really. Um if you send me that back tomorrow, I'll put it on letterhead and digitally sign it and send it back.
Okay.
And I guess we'll keep it, we'll end up executing.
Okay.
Back and we'll bring it to Mike and where.
And then do you want, so do you want me to send it without signatures? Then you're gonna sign it and then we're gonna sign it or?
I think you want it on letterhead.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and I and again, I'm gonna assume that we've made the motion. It'll be in the minutes and we can we can sign it as appropriate.
Perfect.
Because because we've agreed as a board to do that.
Right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
So we'll start mobilizing somewhere on Memorial Day and then expect to be underway by June second.
All right, that's very exciting news.
It is, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right.
So get started June second.
Uh yeah. Okay, next on the agenda, we have uh approval of the right of way permit application updates. Um we are running behind schedule um by at least ten minutes.
It's okay.
Now, um yeah, I'm just acknowledging that because there are some people here who are here for other topics and apologize, but we have lots of things we need to accomplish this evening and we're just gonna keep rolling. Um Karen, do you have that?
I'll do.
Excellent. We'll have you continue to share then if you're good.
Okay, so as everyone knows, we've had various right of ways. It's commonly been called uh in town, the driveway permit. Um but it it actually involves, as we've been through things in the last couple of years, a little more than just a quote driveway. So we're we're proposing to rename this the right of way permit, uh right of way use permit, and that would involve a high, the driveways, highways and legal trails. Um the document is changed in a couple of ways. The first page is really talking about wh- wh- what the person who's looking for the permit is trying to do. And so we want the mailing address. We wanna know what's the physical address of the property. If the proposed permit is for a portion of the property with road frontage different from the address, let's know where it is. Maybe it's at the back end of someone's property. Um we wanna know if the proposed use is permanent or temporary. What is the proposed use? And then I know Edie, you've got a comment here. I just installed tick boxes that said the person wants to install a new driveway within the town right of way. Install a new culvert. We wanna know type and dimension. Replace, repair existing culverts. We wanna know type and dimension. Undercrown utilities, and so they need, we want a description and a maintenance or modification of a legal trail, and again, a description. The note that we have here, and this is.
You don't need to worry about that.
You're sure?
Yeah, no, we'll move on.
Okay.
Yep.
But are we leaving it in or taking it out?
Leaving it in.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh then this next piece is is really, we're talking about the work and permit standards and the actual standards.
And the location of the work.
And the location, right, and all of that has been in process since last fall. This is now just formalizing, you know, check the box. Is it a driveway or culvert? What class road are you? And and by checking the box, people are saying that they acknowledge that they're subject to Exhibit A driveway standards, or they're 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 subject to Exhibit B Underground Utility for Unpaved Roads or Exhibit C Underground Utility Across Paved Roads. And then for legal trails and numbers.
Yeah.
What's going on with that? So that's that bit. Proposed start date, end date, telephone number, you know, how thi- this way, when something comes to us, we're pretty fully informed. This part is the proposed location of work, and it's most important if it's for a permanent change. And if it's a permanent change and it's involving adjacent properties, a neighbor's property, somebody not the actual owner of whoever's putting the permit in, do you have an easement and wanna know? I don't wanna read the easement. I don't wanna, you know, I'm assuming that the easement is valid, but at least this tells me that there's something on the books that this person has permanent, permanent permission.
Or they're at least saying they have.
They're saying they have, right.
Right, because I just wanna point out again, legally, from the state perspective, we are not required to do research to confirm that what we're getting is accurate.
Correct.
We that's, so I wanted to just make sure that, yes, we we're gonna ask for that, but we are not required to then go and do a bunch more research about like, is this, is this, we're not lawyers, we're not.
Do you wanna change this word granting access to representing access? And they're saying this represents our access and we've got book and page. Does it matter?
No, it was more, my my comment there was more about the attorney just said, please attach documentation and you added the stuff to say, here's here's where the documentation is. And I was just, again, I'm trying to make it very clear where our role and responsibilities stop, which is we are not doing a bunch of research on each and every permit. We are assuming that the information that we are getting from the from the a permit requister is is accurate and doesn't and doesn't step on somebody else's rights because we cannot grant you the right to cross your neighbor's property.
Yeah, just because you get a driveway driveway permit, that means you get to put a edge of a driveway in the right of way. It doesn't mean you get to plow eighty miles to
Yeah.
Someplace nice.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So I think there's not, I I think by and large, this is a a from the last time that we discussed this as a board, these are a few formatting changes. We have conferred again with the inter attorney, although not on the last couple of back and forth that Karen and I did. But I think um I think we're ready to just um take out the comments. Um you put this permit on the website, begin to use it. Um this this will, for anybody who's putting permits in and you are required to put permits in, um it will raise the fee by five dollars, but basically that's just aligning with the permit fee schedule that has been out for years and years and years, whereas the form itself was still at thirty dollars. Now we're just going up to the thirty five dollars that somewhere in the past ten or fifteen years, somebody decided was the right fee for this kind of part.
So we had the driveway standard, we have the exhibit, the unpaved roads, and then the paved roads. This is a much bigger deal, and we've got lots of the trans drawings.
Yeah, and those are already on the website today.
Yeah.
Um and need to be followed today, but this just, this just updates the form to try to make it clearer and easier um that we understand better what people are trying to do when they when they put in an application. So I'd I'd take a motion to approve the right of way permit application updates.
Um I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? Yeah, I do. Somebody might be in um have some background noise.
Okay. Something's leaking.
It's it's Lori. There must be some wind down there in Florida.
Sorry, I'll turn off till you ask for the vote.
You're okay.
That's okay. All right, so um if there's no further discussion.
Edie, are you are you taking discussions from people outside the board?
Yes, please speak. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Um uh Edie, uh there are uh situations uh in which uh a a a landowner can get permission from a neighbor, but not necessarily in the form of a formal easement. Will that be acceptable to the board? To the where 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 the work needs to go uh uh onto the neighbor's land.
Is it permanent, though? How?
Well, I think I think that what they they are supposed to then attach that, and hopefully the board at the time of the of that application will look at it.
But what happens when the person, here here's a quick question, David. So if the current landowner sells their property and it's not an easement, but somebody has put something across, I I I don't know anything about zoning and I don't know anything about property. So to me, if you have permanent access, you need an easement, otherwise you don't really have an agreement.
It's really not illegal.
But it might, you could have a letter for a temporary, that would make sense.
That there's like all kinds of combinations that could happen here. It could be somebody's temporarily trying to do that in order to.
Temporary letter makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Temporary.
There there are, there are uh in the two situations I'm working on, uh DV fiber will ultimately uh uh enforce its easement uh which exists on the properties. However, getting them to take that action uh is going to delay our work. And so as a uh uh workaround, uh I've asked the uh the 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 abutter to provide permission uh on a notarized form uh so that uh which could be attached to the uh right of way permit.
Does it say in lieu of easement, you know, DV fiber easement or something or or?
No, it just they they give they give permission for the work to be done.
I think we might wanna check quickly with our attorney on those, but I I mean, it feels to me like, again, what we're trying to do is is improve the ability for people to tell us what their project is as reasonably quickly as possible, give approval for those projects that seem that seem valid to us. And and we know we're trying to, we're trying to make ourselves um more efficient with the process as well as um you know, covering as much as we can and an understanding of what the rights are here.
Right, and I just don't wanna, I I I don't wanna be in a position where we're saying, yes, go ahead, and we somehow invalidated or messed with somebody's land records, right?
Well, that's why.
That's what I'm afraid of. Because having that come bite us two years from now, saying, well, you guys said they could do it and I didn't have an easement, and now you gotta rip it out and it's your fault.
So maybe maybe we run, maybe we run these past Fisher and say, are you good with this, right?
So I can I can send you a uh a copy of the uh draft agreement that that I uh provided for the landowner to to get the permission, and I'll I'll be uh I'll I I'd love to get uh uh the uh legal review.
That would be great. I think that makes the most sense in this case. I mean, there's so much of what's happening here. That's just like, there's a lot of building happening all at once.
Yeah.
We're all scrambling to try to make it work better, faster, easier. Um but again, we don't wanna leave ourselves in a bad position going forward, so that would be great. Thank you.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Of course, yeah.
The the logistics of getting the uh permit approved. At at some point, I believe uh we do a write out with Mike uh or or whomever is uh, you know, the the board wants to appoint, whether it's the uh Mike or or the uh the two on on the board. Uh does that happen before the select board approves the uh uh application or after? Uh, does that happen before the select board approves the, uh, uh, application or after?
But usually before, and the reason for that is, you know, like, what we want to do is we want to, we want to be able to come here and make decisions. Uh, the reason we want it to be before is if for, in case of driveway permits, for example, Mike needs to look at it and say what the culvert size is. Right, so, um, I think we'll try to do that, but I, that to your point, like, one of the things that still drives me a little bit crazy is I really want to have something that says. Permit form is received by Patty Dell, permit goes to, and who gets it next? You know, like, just have that process flow down because I do feel like it's been a little herky jerky here and there. And that's not, that's not, you know, making me comfortable for sure.
Okay, so for, for the upcoming one, I'll, I'll coordinate with, uh, uh, Karen and, and Lori, uh, and, and Mike to, um. Uh, make sure we do the write out before it's, um.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back out of that one because I don't know beams from roads. Um, and I'm up to my eyeballs in accounting conversions, but, but I'm happy to send the information and, and, and inter- and. Between ED and I, if you want to send us, we can deal with Bob, Robert Fisher, because I can do that from my desk.
Okay, all right, good. And then, and then, so then I'll coordinate with Mike for the write out.
Yeah, I think that's best, all right, Mike?
And Mike, you know.
I missed part of this conversation because I was outside talking to him about it, write out for a while.
Just, uh, checking on the permits that are right of way permits, even if they're not, even if it's an underground thing.
I do for driveways now.
Yeah.
Objection.
Yeah, yeah.
And then sign off and then it goes to the next person.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Sounds like we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, sounds like with Mike is the best way, David.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Now that we have to rescind our motion because we need to. Have Fisher look at this.
No, I think, I think we're, we're talking about specific instances here. What we're doing right now is approving that this form will be the new one to be put on the website. So we'll put this form on the website. We will handle those two things as they come in. If we need to revise the firm, forms further, we.
Yeah, otherwise this will get kicked down the road another six months.
Yeah.
But, but I, I think that's, I think that's a good, I think that's a good observation, right?
I mean.
And if, and if he says you have to do A, B, C, then we'll. We're about to language again.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So all those in favor of approving the, um, right away permit application updates, please say aye.
Bye.
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 Hi, motion carries five zero. It's unanimous again. Okay.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Great, I'm gonna talk really fast about the recycling request for bids. Um, when I went to the meeting last week, um, about recycling RFP. We were looking at an extended timeline in which to send that out, and then today, just before the meeting, I found out that some of the other towns are already planning to submit the RFP. With the original date to open, which is May twenty-third. I believe that those towns are trying to get their bids out by, oh, say tomorrow, and I just got the form that we can modify today. So Karen, I know you had agreed to assist with that, and I know you've been working here all day for other stuff.
And yesterday.
And yesterday, and, um, what I, what I'm going to, to propose is, um. That I try to work with somebody else on the board and we just, we just do our best. To get the form out, to get the bids out, get them out to the, we need to write some copy for ad. We need to send it out to these people, which we have the list of people, and we need to have some sort of form in which to can collect the information.
Yeah, and that, that, and that all exists. It's just a matter of modifying what we've already got. So that's pretty straightforward and the emails are pretty straightforward. The only thing that's going to be time consuming is because there's thirty some odd.
Yeah.
People that it has to go to, so, but it's the same, the same, the same, the same, the same. Once you have the.
Yeah.
Form, it's the same, so I'm happy to.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I had, I had planned to revise the form, which, like I said, I just got today, um, and I was like, that's not a big deal, and then all of a sudden it's like, ooh. So I will revise the form in short order. Um, if you want to just even point me to a, a place on the Google Drive where.
There, it's not there. I haven't put anything on the Google Drive, so I'll have to send you.
Okay.
This is kind of the last thing, is probably the easy thing, and then I can walk you, do your driving lesson and walk through.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then, then what I can do once that's out, if there's back ended stuff, then I can circle back so that you can go off and.
Okay.
But if, yeah, if I don't have to do that tomorrow, that would be ideal.
Okay, great. Emily, I might be reaching out to you for some help too, like, uh, depending on how things go.
Say if we get a packet or some, some information together, you know, we can. Get it so that it's kind of the same for people.
Yeah, I'm just gonna attach a copy of the purchasing policy and.
It's already attached to the letter.
They've given a form, they've given us a form of here specifically what Halifax wants, I will edit that form.
You don't even have to, because we have a bid form, all, all that needs to happen is what is the specs?
And that's, that's specs that I'm talking about.
So it's not the whole form, yeah, so that, with the form is there, we just pop it in, rename it.
Okay.
And then that should be, you know, if there's any attachments that we need. So, yeah, we, we created form letters.
Yeah.
Um, so that should, that should work.
Okay.
And what, when is the date that they want the bids by?
May twenty-third. I was thinking we would call a special meeting to bring it, um, to bring it back.
Careful.
Um, but the, um.
Right before Memorial Day?
But, well, the other thing is that the other towns are apparently saying the bids need to be here by then. And we'd have to make sure that Patty signed off on it. Um, and then we can open them at another meeting, which is just not how.
So for us, the meeting would be the twentieth.
The, so we, we cannot open them before the twenty-third. We can open them at the next meeting. Um, that we have and we can, we can either create a special meeting to open bids or we can, you know, but. I will put, I will put on the form, uh, the bids will be open on the next regular meeting.
Which would be June, according to, for us, it would be June third.
June third, okay, I think somebody else is on the way out on June tenth or something, but that's fine. You know, the, the, the point is that it has to be fair to the bidder, so we can't open it before anybody else opens it and vice versa. I know, like, but we can't accept any bids after that opening happens, uh, you know, after our date. That makes sense? Okay, shoot, talking a mile a minute, but trying to catch up a little bit here. Let's move into new business. Um, and the first thing on our new business is a Wheeler Road complaint that I've noted health issues junk. Which is the name of our, um, ordinance and dogs, and I do want to set the table for this a little bit. Um, so, uh. I had a phone call and then that was followed up again by some email to explain a situation that was happening on Wheeler Road. Um, where there were some conditions at a neighboring property that they felt were unhelpful. And, uh, were concerned about, um, about trying to make sure that these issues got addressed. Um. Everybody that I know who lives in Halifax is really trying to be good neighbors and. These are hard conversations to have when situations get into these places where it's like. I'm not really happy with what's happening elsewhere in the neighborhood. Um, and so we are trying to address this issue. Um, and we don't always have insight as a town to what others might be doing in order to address the issue already. Um, so, the, the concern, um, we do have here tonight. The resident who lives on the property, um, and that person has been taking some action to try to resolve the issue. In conjunction with agencies that I did not know were involved when I brought this to the board's attention. So, um, so I just kind of want to state that the problem is that there's a, a piece of property where it appears there has been trash that has been being burned. There's also material, um, such as, um, mattresses or other things that look, um, unsightly. Um, and the concern really is about like making sure there's no contamination of the land. Um, the complainant did state that they had, um, reached out to the owner. Of the property who is not living in state and had not understood that there was anything being done on this situation. Um, I reached out to that owner, um, who I do not believe is here today. Um, although there's one or two people on the, on the call that I'm not a hundred percent sure who's. Who's, was, somebody was there as an iPhone. Um, and, uh, that person didn't, I never spoke with that person, but that person apparently contacted the resident. And that resident did get in touch with me. I looked at the property myself before I decided, yes, we should move ahead with the meeting here. Um, and there, and I could see where the concerns might have been happening. I also then heard from the resident that, that they were in fact taking care of some of that, and I went back and looked at the property again earlier today. And some of the bags of garbage indeed had been moved from that point. So while there's still, I think, work to be done there, um, I do think that, um, that we've got an opportunity here. To do some community problem solving, and that's really how I want to broach this. We do have the right as a board to enforce a junk ordinance is what it's called. We don't do that very much in town. We, we really don't, um, and we're always cognizant that. We don't know what the circumstances of life are for anybody else who happens to be living next to us. We don't know whether they've got family things going on. We don't know whether they've, you know. Um, had. Personal health issues, whatever it is, you know, we try to be accommodating to that until we get to a point where we say. This just really needs to be addressed. So that is my introduction. That is how I'm broaching this. I appreciate. Um, the people who are here trying to help us resolve this issue, including Sue Kelly, our health officer. Um, Kyle Farnsworth, who is our town constable and animal control officer, and, um, and so. That is my introduction to the topic, and I'm going to ask if anybody would like to speak on it.
Person that lives there and I've, uh, like all these things and stuff, showing you that I'm cleaning the place up. I inherited it from my best friend and he passed away. Um. So I've been there for three years, trying to clean the place up, clean his stuff up, try to put my stuff in there, back and forth. And then I had heart attack. So, um, I'm back. Didn't help, but I only can do so much a day. My, because I started getting tired and everything like that. Not making excuses for anything. I'm working, I'm cleaning up. I paid about four thousand dollars so far cleaning the place up. And I'm still going. I got a guy coming on Sunday to even pick up even one. So the whole outside will be cleaned up. So I'm really working.
Thank you very much. I know how, how hard that must, that must be. I can't, I mean, I can't imagine, right? Um. So with, I really appreciate that you're, that you came here, um, to talk to us and let us know. Yeah, 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 no, I think, uh, my, you know, kudos to you.
Um, I want to ask, you are not the current owner of the property?
I rent, it, what it is, is I'm renting the owner.
Okay.
And I made an agreement with him that I would take care of everything there.
Okay.
All he does is I give him the, the money and he pays the taxes until the place is paid off. I got a year and a half and the place is paid off. You know, it's, it's a private, you know, sale between me and him, and that's the agreement I made. Now, if I kept up with it, not really, because of all the problems I've had. Well, I'm not making that as an excuse either. But if I lose this place, I lose my job and then I'm homeless again.
It's not what.
No, we don't want that.
Don't want that.
In any way, no sir.
So thank you so much for, for sharing that. Um, I also wanted to just, um, bring up a point you and I talked a little bit about, which is that there is another agency that is checking up.
Yes, the father marshal came in about a month and a half ago. He gave me thirty days, then he gave me an extension. Um, I've been fixing everything that they've been asking me to do. Um, the only thing I haven't been able to fix is now I got a leak in my, um, water pipe.
Hmm.
And I had to dig up the ground and right now I don't have the money for that. So it runs, I mean, it's a small leak. I mean, I have water and something like that. It's just, I have to get it fixed before I went to.
Um, just so that you're aware, and I don't know if this will apply in your situation, but there is a, a group called the Housing Rehabilitation Committee in town. Which works with property owners if there are things that come up that of, of that sort of nature. And people need assistance, so if you'd like, you can reach back out to me and I'll be happy to give you the name of that, that group. Um. One other issue that I wanted to mention, um, has to do with the, um, the complaints did say they had a concern about letting their own dogs out. Because there were dogs on your property and I just.
I have one dog, you know, everybody that I've talked to, um, have never complained about my dog. She mostly stays in the yard.
Okay, and is, and is, is the dog licensed?
Um, if she has to be licensed, I can, but I licensed her when I got her in Bradwell.
Okay, you need to, we need to renew the license with us and we need to make sure that she has the, that she, she or he has a baby shot.
He has all of her shots.
Okay.
So I can definitely take care of that for you.
Great, and you can, you can work with the town clerks here to do that?
No problem.
Yeah, um. So. Other concerns or questions or comments?
So I understand correctly then from what you're saying, you'll be the owner of the property in a year and a half?
A year and a half. I worked really hard. I was homeless for two years. Um, living in my car. Um, found a great job in Dover at the Last Chair. Um, I'm a chef there. Um. And I just working, I worked, I worked two jobs for almost two years. I was assistant manager of. Family Dollar in Wilmington and I worked at the Last Chair. I worked from seven o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night, six a.m.
Yeah, and, and you're the only resident of the property?
I'm the only resident right now. My daughter lives with me because she dropped out of school, but she's going back to school for colonial arts. So she, well, she was trying, she's trying to be a veterinarian, but she couldn't do the cadavers, she couldn't do the dissecting part, so. She, so that can like warm for a little bit, so she's home for a little bit and then she's going to colonial arts school. Other than that, it's just me and. I, I tried to do as much work. I got a friend coming over tomorrow to help me with one of those stuff. Other than that, I, like I said, it's been a long road. I. I got half of a roof. I still got to finish. I got one side done and then a tree hit it. Came down and slid down the roof, so now I have to fix that again, but I'm, every time I fix something. Another problem happens. So this is, but I'm working on it and I got two and a half months off. From my job because it's, um, we closed down for two and a half months because it's from, you know. Season restaurant, so you know. Um, so I got two and a half months and I've been busting my butt since I've been off.
Okay. All right. Does anybody online like to speak to this issue?
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead, say it.
So. Um, given, given that there is a neighbor who feels uncomfortable that she, she, he doesn't feel that their dogs are safe. Um, is there any way that you think you can, um, mitigate that problem?
Like, I can try to, I mean, she gets out of the yard, I will, will get her right away, but she mostly stays in the yard. And everybody around me has said that she, it's not a problem, all she, she barks. Her bark, you know, that, she barks loud, so she sounds like she's aggressive, but she's not.
When, so, so if, um, if someone walks down Wheeler Road with their ducks, does that draw her out of your yard? Does she could run out of your?
That might a little bit, but when I yell to her, she comes right back. So I get her right back in the yard and, you know, sometimes she tries to stroll away and I get in my car and I go get her, but.
Is, is she outdoors, um, loose outdoors when you're not, when you're at work?
No.
Uh.
Nope, she only comes out when I'm there.
Okay, that's helpful, that's wonderful, yeah.
Um, I just want to add on, um, just for clarifications, um, in the last. Few days or so, maybe last week, there has been quite a few dog complaints that have come in. Um. Seems that from what I'm gathering, you might have talked to maybe the property owner. Um, he had come over a couple of times, um, he talked to you about, you guys had a conversation.
Yep.
Um, he said that he felt very comfortable when they had the conversation and that, um, if you had continued to. Try to do better with maintaining the, where the dog is.
Me and him have had very, we both, we exchanged numbers and everything. So, um, if there's something going on in his property, I tell him, if, mean the same thing, um. He was just worried about the kid, his kids, and I told him, when he comes up and his kids are with him, let me know and I'll bring her out so they can introduce each other. And stuff like that, and he had no problem with that. So, I mean, she's the friendliest dog ever and if kids were getting kidnapped or something, she would attack the person that was trying to take the kids. She's that type of dog. I trained her that way. So, I, she's been around my grandkids, everything. And I can't even, if I wanted to, I wouldn't have to do it, but if I raised a hand to my grandkids, she would try to fight me, like, to protect them. Nice, she's that type of dog.
So I'm going to tell you a little story about myself, which is, I'm like a devoted cat person, and though I've had dogs in the past in my life, I, I choose not to. Have them at this moment. Um, and I, I ha- I have to say, like, I think I'm kind of afraid of dogs. That's just kind of like where I am. Um, would you be opposed to me if I were ever to come and say hello to you, giving you a phone call to tell you I'm going to be in the area?
Yeah.
Um, just so that we could work out whatever that situation might be.
I usually leave her inside when people go over.
Okay.
I don't, I don't let her out unless she knows you.
And would, yeah, and would you be okay with me giving your phone number to another resident of Wheeler Road?
Anybody that wants to come to my house and talk to me, be right, come, um.
Except that would be the person who would, the minute I saw your dog turn tail and run.
Like I said, she's most, she, she gonna run from you. That's, she's that, you know, she barks. Put your hair up, she barks. And then all of a sudden she like, oh, I don't know you, and runs away. But, you know, so she's, she, she doesn't bite. And she's been attacked by a dog and she's still friendly. I almost lost her.
Yeah, go ahead, Kyle.
I would just like to add on, um, no matter how friendly the dog is, it's very important to keep the dog maintained on your own property.
Yeah, I should.
When a dog gets out, even if your dog is super friendly, let's say someone else. When a dog gets out, even if your dog is super friendly, let's say someone else's dog just got out of the car. That dog is on its own property, not very friendly with other dogs.
Yep.
Now, your dog might not have been the issue, but we don't have a, an ordinance for animals, but we do have a leash law in Vermont. So um, it could cause you issues down the road if, if, I'm just, just.
I'm not the only one that has dog, I'm not, I'm not trying to snitch on nobody. Well, I'm not the only one that has a dog that runs around.
Understood.
Understood.
I have plenty of dogs that come up on my land and she's friends with those dogs.
Yep.
Just so you know.
Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, and this is.
I'm not the only one. There's, there's at least five or six that I know.
Absolutely.
A hundred percent.
I don't, I don't, I don't complain because you know what? All those dogs are friends with my dog.
Yeah, so, so just so that you're aware, one of the things we are looking at to do as a town is to, is to create an animal control ordinance.
Property so she can stay in the.
Yeah, that, that, that may, yeah, that may, that may work in some instances too. Um, so my, my feeling, um, I don't know how the other board members feel, is my feeling is that we came in at a good problem solving time, but I'm not sure that we as a board need to worry at the moment about enforcing our junk ordinance or any other issues. Is that to your perspective as health officer? We've got, we've got an agreement that you're gonna license the dog, which is pretty important for us as well.
No problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I'm fifty years old. I just turned fifty. I don't want no, I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to live my life, you know?
Yeah.
And I lived, well, my daughters, she's there for a little while, but then I'm there by myself. It sucks, but you know, I'm there by myself. And I do what I can.
Alright.
He's cleaning it up, right?
Yeah.
He, 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 he's spending, he's going, he's doing everything he possibly can.
Like I said, I got all the receipts right here. Everything. I brought all proof.
Thank you. I, that's, that's awesome. We really appreciate it.
Okay, so I'll ask one more time if anybody on the um, on the call would like to speak on this issue.
I mean, I would just like to say as a board member, um, I appreciate the fact that he's doing his best to clean up and and having health issues, uh, I can attest to that. Sometimes you just can't move as fast as you'd like to and you get tired and you know, more easily. So, you know, a little bit every day, it does the job and I think it's great. You're trying to clean up.
Yeah, and I also do appreciate, I mean, I also want to say on the other side of this, right? It's really hard for us as neighbors if there's a situation that rises to this level of concern. But that is part of why we're here as a board. And so, you know, I don't, I don't want anybody to feel badly that they, that they brought this to our attention. Um, I think it's, it's important for us to try to um, do what we can to learn more about our neighbors and help them through whatever's going on in their life when we can and uh, maintain a, a good, a good and perhaps create a better relationship um, among people. So I just think this has been a good example of everybody in town kind of trying to do their best to be neighborly and do our right, do the right thing.
I'm a retired fireman, so I know.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your service in the past. Alright, let's go ahead and close that issue. Thank you so much. Um, if people wish to leave, they can, you know, get to hear about our cash flow problems. It'll be fascinating. Thank you.
Appreciate you, man.
Yeah.
You guys all said, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Kyle.
Have a good night.
Thank you, good night. Okay, so next up we have a discussion about um, about our cash through, flow through the end of the year and into FY twenty six Q one. Um, and I budgeted about thirty minutes. Again, we've, we're, we're over a lot of our time perhaps, but um, my, the reason I wanted to get this on, on a meeting was because I had an expectation. At one point, not too long ago, I was sort of told, oh, we have seven hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, and I was like, what are we spending that on for the rest of the year, right? So I was, I was like, wow, that was more cash than I thought. Um, and so I wanted to understand if we had this an expectation that we would likely have a surplus at the end of this budget year. Because going to the next bullet point, um, increasingly I hear things like states not being granted FEMA emergency designations. And so if we get to a point um, where the federal funding uh, rise up when a new storm comes through, um, we may want to do things like try to figure out if we need a strategic gravel reserve. Cause that was what we used the most of when we were going through tropical storm Irene and trying to fix things up. Um, or are there other things that are on the expected um, path here, like refurbishing the grader? Um, and then the last piece of this was really, um, Patty had expressed a concern about our hatch school structure project being done shortly after the fiscal year starts and possibly before we had collected much in taxes. So she was a little concerned about that from a cash flow perspective. So with that, Karen and Patty have done a fabulous job again of putting together some amazing spreadsheets that we can talk about, questions, comments, and get a sense of um, like, what is our cash position and, and are these things that I think about at night worth worrying about or maybe not so much? So Karen, thank you for pulling that together.
But yes, first, um, I don't, I don't have information right now on what our cash position is today. I, I was here all day talking to Patty about a zillion things and I, that did not jump in my head to ask her.
That's okay.
Um, but I can find out.
And this might be the start of a conversation that we can carry forward as well. But um, knowing that we needed to have this meeting, I didn't want to put it too late because I don't like the last minute scramble to spend money. That's never.
Yeah, um, you, you did, you did talk about, and I'm gonna hit a couple of things, and I know Mike, you've got some comments as well, um. There was, when you mentioned, you know, FEMA and yes, you know, we all hear in the news that after tornadoes, certain cities, you know, certain states are, are are not getting whatever emergency relief they, they would otherwise anticipate. Um, from, from our, and we did our FEMA, FEMA was there for us. Um, we got the FEMA and just as a reminder, um, and probably also, you know, probably Lori for you, you know, typically there's a, a seventy-five, twenty-five percent sharing of expenses. Um, where the town would pay twenty-five percent of, of an expense and then the FEMA grant would come in for seventy-five percent. And that's what happened with everything that we went through, I guess, through Irene and then recently. Um, we were, we did receive FEMA assistance for two big projects, Pike Road and Vaughn. Uh, towards the end of last year, in Vermont, and I don't, I can't speak to other states, but in Vermont, and we received notification that certain projects would change from being seventy-five, twenty-five to being ninety-ten, which meant Halifax and other towns would be due that incremental difference, right? It was, we were gonna get additional funding, additional FEMA funding. So the first one with Pike Road, um, sorry, with Vaughn Road, we, that designation was changed. And I believe we did get that money.
Yes.
On Vaughn, right? It should be there on Vaughn Road.
It is there.
That we received, yeah, ninety percent FEMA, so we received for Vaughn Road twenty-two thousand, six thirty-eight, forty-three. We were wondering what happened to Pike Road and we hadn't seen it, and Patty bird dogged it like crazy for the last month or more. So she now got them to change, for whatever reason, Pike Road didn't get switched from twenty, seventy-five percent to ninety percent coverage. It now has been changed, so now we're just waiting for the money to come. So I don't know when it's coming. But uh, that was why we hadn't received it. Somewhere along the line, someone didn't hit a button. And so she, she had to, the FEMA people were no longer there. Anyway. Long story short, she um, kind of did yeoman's work and got that sorted out. So we should be getting that amount, but she doesn't know when. I have to believe they're gonna want to get rid of the, you know, get that off their desk. That, that's, that's kind of old news. They have plenty of other things to worry about. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll see that um, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And certainly hopefully before the, before the end of this fiscal year for sure.
So, yeah, okay. Um. Yes, that's all. So that's, that's some of the incoming money that we had talked about. Some of the other incoming money that we got this last year that was unexpected, and we spoke about this at an earlier meeting, was the reimbursements from GMP for the work that was done last summer, um, including um, money back for gravel, money back for sand, money back uh, for.
Well, just to clarify, the gravel money was, has, has replenished what we use for gravel.
Right, it, it's not additional money, it's just making this whole.
Right.
The sixty thousand, one hundred, whatever dollars it's left in there now is equipment and labor cost.
Right, and, and that, so that is, that, that is um, additional cash that is, that is coming in.
That has come in.
That has come in, yes, we, we got the hundred and eighty-one thousand, so a hundred and but a thousand, one hundred certainly was for uh, was for gravel and other stuff and which is in if you, do you want me to, want me to share my?
So.
Let me, yeah, let me share my.
I, and I, I basically pulled out like a few line items that I have questions about.
Alright, let's share.
So I, cause I went back to my thing before where I was like, we've got this money coming in, we've got that money going out, and I, I do think that there are a couple of things we um, uh, might wanna follow up on.
Okay, so this, this column here, this column, this is what was reimbursed during fiscal twenty-five. So we have labor, again, that's GMP. There's the whole right over here. That's the, that's the
That's the.
Components of the one eighty-one.
Yeah.
So, so we've got repaid gravel, so we have twenty-four thousand equipment, loader, tractor. They repaid the stone, so that's just making us whole, and then we have eight thousand, three hundred nineteen of wages.
Yeah.
Okay, so the other two components are just making us whole. And so the balance for twenty-five for the next few months, this is what we have, this column.
Yeah, yeah, so let's.
What we're working with.
So my notes kind of walk through this spreadsheet, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of speak to a couple of these line items. So seven, one, one, zero is the road crew gross wages. Um, the balance that's listed there um, is, you know, we did have quite a few. So I'm looking at the balance column, the one on P at this point. Um, we did have quite a few months where we were down a person on the road crew. Um, the um, overtime wages, I'm looking at that now, looks like we kind of were at the upper end of that. And I did some quick calculations to say that if we have, I have, I don't know, eight or nine payrolls left and the number of um, all staff for a forty-hour week is fifty-eight, fifty-five, sixty for Karen, sixty cents for Karen. Um, so if we, if we just had forty-hour week of, and we had ten more weeks left, um, we would still possibly be over in this category of by twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. So just to say, like, I was looking at what we had and what we have, and so that, that's, that's looking like there will be a, a surplus in that line item.
A surplus.
A surplus.
Okay, we said over, I was like, what do you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, a surplus.
Okay.
Um, so that was that line item. I wanted to just take a look quickly too at um, seventy-two, twenty, which is life insurance. Um, and the reason that the life insurance.
Health insurance.
Health insurance. Uh.
Seventy-two, thirty is life insurance.
Okay, seventy-two, which one has a hu- a hundred and, uh, let's see.
Health insurance is a hundred and twelve thousand.
Health insurance, okay, so I must have just written down the wrong, um, the wrong code here. So health insurance, hundred and twenty-two thousand was, sorry, the budget was.
The budget was one thirty-nine, eight eighty-five.
Eight eighty-five.
We spent one twelve, four ninety-seven, and we've got twenty-seven thousand, three eighty-eight left.
Okay, so the reason that that popped into my head was I was looking at the orders for this week. And this, or this week is the monthly bill from those guys, and it was twenty thousand dollars, which was a lot. And that was because we have some retroactive payments that have to happen for newest employee. So my expectation for this line item, after calculating out what the standard monthly rate will be for the last month of the year, is that we will be overspent in this category by eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. So a little, you know, that's a little bit of new information. So again, just trying to track on some of these bigger items.
And what was the surplus you thought on wages?
Twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-one.
Four twenty-one, okay, so we're still net ahead.
Yeah.
Surplus, okay.
Yeah, and I, I hadn't looked at overtime, I hadn't looked at anything. I just kind of was like horny and a couple of things like that I had concerns or questions about. Um, the next one I want to talk about is the um, building repairs and maintenance line.
Seventy-three, forty.
Seventy-three, forty. Looks like I got both of the pieces of that accurate. Um, update the spreadsheet to do health insurance on the other one. Um, so that one um, stood out to me for this reason. So our spend here was the new garage roof, eighty-nine thousand, whatever. And what we say there is reimbursed is twenty-two thousand and six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. That dollar amount matches the Vaughn Road extra income that we got from FEMA.
Vaughn Road.
Yeah.
Sixty thousand.
This number right here, that is exact math.
Twenty-two thousand.
Oh, yeah, twenty-two.
The twenty-two, six thirty-eight, so.
Twenty-two, six thirty.
Right, and so Patty's note says this is funds from the ninety percent completion of Vaughn Road items. That's, that, we've got that, that is correct.
Awesome. What she doesn't have in there is that we were intending to, to use the four thousand dollar mini mer
Mm-hmm.
Money there, and we also had said that we were going to finish up using the building reserve fund money um, of, um.
Of the contractor from years ago.
From years ago, is that actual reserve fund, and we, it's seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars.
Well, that looks. I thought that was some of the money we used for the down payment.
Well, this, this eighty-nine thousand on this whole thing is the total amount, and so far we're, we're saying we haven't paid it all, right? We still have.
So I'm looking for the building, there's the building maintenance, this one?
Yeah, so that's seventy-eight, oh-six, fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we had already designated those two things to go, whether for payment number one or down payment or whatever. We had already said, let's use those because they legitimately should be used for the building maintenance fund.
And then, and sorry, and Vaughn Road, which was twenty-two.
Yeah, so.
Six-three, yeah, right.
So, so that got put in there, but those other things did not, and that still leaves us with extra money to cover that, however that works, right? But I, I did catch that number and thought, oh, that's interesting, because it looks like we still, we've obviously paid the invoice for the, for the roof. Um, but we have to figure out where else to fill in that hole from. Um, so these are, these are mostly just like things to check on later, maybe.
Um, so here, so what you're saying is here, we should have the seven thousand, eight oh-six, fourteen? Want me to add that to the, to the edit note?
Yeah.
Cause I, I have to talk to Patty about all this anyway.
Yep.
Um.
So.
And then, so, okay, let's see. Seven thousand, eight oh-six, fourteen.
Yeah, and the four thousand for the minimum.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Alright, the next thing I wrote down was on uh, seventy-four, ten, which is sand. So this is the winter sand that we asked Mike to go ahead and get up to twenty thousand dollars of additional sand for us, so that balance does say minus nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two. I don't think you could have gotten much closer to the, to the mark there. Um, so we're, we're overspent as expected on that. But we had talked about that money um, being covered, if you will, from some of the gravel from GMP.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm just kind of doing my mental math, balancing this stuff out. Um. And then I wrote down gravel, but I don't know. So just to, just to kind of note with the gravel, right? Um, this one, which is seventy-four, thirty, this one, we still have a balance of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars here, but there's that sense that twenty thousand of that should go up to the su- sand. And then there's this question, if we. If we have extra, should we buy extra? But I think there's still other things to cover, right?
So before we, before we do that, so and just since Mike is here, and so there's a note, I'll just get this over here where. Where we can move it. So there's a couple of things we can do, and I think I I do not have any. I I don't feel compelled to take twenty thousand here and add it to sand so that we hit specific line items on the head, right?
I I'm not.
But just as, but I take your point, oh, there's a mental, like, we're up, we're up or down, right?
Right.
So I think for this, if we've got sixty one, whether twenty goes wherever. We had in our equipment, you know, kind of look forward.
Mm-hmm.
Please come on to our equipment look forward, which is page. Uh, page nineteen, there were a couple of things, there was a roller compactor and a, you know, a ledge hammer for an excavator. Um, you know, talking to Mike, uh, getting a roller. So is that that roller compact, is that what we were talking about, or is that something different, right, though? So if we talk roller compact, and we thought that could be between forty and seventy, you know, you know, depends on how big we get it, but. A roller compactor, you know, goes a long way to helping keep our roads. Uh, in good shape, so that I think is something we should think about, if we're gonna spend the money before the end of the year. At some point, you know, we're already looking forward, things don't get cheaper, the longer you wait. So if this is sort of, you know, available capital that we weren't expecting, and we can reduce our capital. Cost, we'll have it now, but as far as our tax, that has to be funded by the taxpayer. Rather than having to buy this other piece of equipment in a year or two, and it will, you know, it's gonna cost more than what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So that was something that that Mike and I were talking about.
Okay, so that's that's an interesting thing.
Uh, wait, and one other, just so we get it out there, oh, and possibly purchasing. Um, of the Conex boxes so that we can store all the old tires, sort of clean everything up, we got machine parts, engine parts. Mike thought that the. Yeah, which are messy and ugly, um, and he thought maybe, you know, four to five thousand or something like that. Just makes it for a cleaner, safer work area.
Okay, alright. Let's come back to that, cause I still find other ways we should spend this money.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean.
We've also got the other thing that I put on here, which is refurbishment of the excavator.
Yeah, yeah, so let's keep going, so.
Uh, sorry, greater.
Yeah, let me just quickly say, I mean, some of those things are all well and good, but I we still have to make sure we cover the roof. We need to definitely.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to roll that over and say, well, you know, we need to add it in the next year's budget because.
Agree, agreed, yeah.
On the other hand, too, and then you guys are probably gonna think I'm being biased by saying this. Your equipment and your labor is what made this money. I think it should be put into something to that situation.
Like refurbishing the grader?
Refurbishing the grader, a roller, something into the equipment.
Yeah.
Area of the the.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that may well be where we go with it, but I just, you know, like, I do want to mention that we have other. We do have other needs for the town as well, right? So to the, to the point of saying, like, we have never, we have never, we've always used select board money to cover extra on the. On the highway budget and sort of not in the reverse, and I'm not suggesting we need to do that here, but I I'm just trying to again say. Um, when, when we have unexpected incoming money, we have done this thing in the past. Where we say this money, the school, um, the school tax overage is gonna go here, right? And ultimately, how this worksheet works out is to some extent more of a Patty and, you know, Karen issue of how does it turn out? I'm mostly concerned about making the best use of the resources we can and the time we have available. Um, because again, some stuff you can easily add to the pile or, you know, purchase.
I'm not quite, yeah, I'm I'm not quite sure what you meant about Patty and I.
Well, you were talking about what what goes into which boxes here.
Oh.
I don't know where that overage of the school payment goes, but clearly she took the Vaughn Road stuff and stuck that in a different.
Yeah, that 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 I'm not sure of why that's there, um.
Yeah.
That wasn't, that wasn't me, what what happens, for instance, with school stuff, the the it comes down here, income against expenses, so we get school. And that just goes into do we or don't we have a deficit?
And so I'm, I'm really mostly interested in the bottom line and making sure that the the extra thing. The extra things we did this year, like fix the garage roof, gets covered somehow. So like, I don't care if that gravel money goes for fixing the garage roof, cause that's still gotta be paid, right? It's, and it has been paid, but we still have to ultimately not spend the money twice.
But I I'm, I'm, I I agree, I agree with that, we have the the roof, you know, that's kind of first call, right?
Yeah.
That's a liability that we have, we've incurred it, the work's been done, first call.
Yeah.
That goes, then I think. Between now and the end of the year, if we can buy a piece of capital equipment for cash. That we're gonna be able to use for a long period of time, or refurbish, you know, refurbish the excavator, you know, refurbish the loader, whatever it is. To help us not have to buy another piece of equipment at really high interest rates, interest rates, you gotta go up a lot, I think.
Yeah, well, and a a lot of this stuff might just be completely out of reach in the end, right?
Exactly, so while we have cash now.
Yeah.
And it's generated by the highway.
But even for the money, even if you give the full money for me, the town, I'll really wanna wear it. To buy a roller compactor, you ain't gonna buy a brand new one, you're gonna have to buy a good use form.
No, okay. I didn't know. So, you know, but things like that help keep our roads better, longer, we're not, so anyway, so I I don't. We don't, we don't need to beat a dead horse, but I am just sort of telegraphing that if this money can stay somewhere within the highway world. And it will help us with capital stuff, so we don't have to get loans to to deal with whatever the issue is.
Yeah, well, and the other, the other piece where this might cross over, though, is that question about that bridge, right? The bridge is not highway, but if we, if we wanna get an understanding what that bridge is gonna cost effects.
Yeah.
Just even doing the engineering study.
I still consider it highway, I mean.
Yeah, I know, but 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 to the point of like, here are all of the needs of the town, bridges happen to be in a different bucket. But like, you know, we just have to kind of make this kind of work at the bottom line. Um, and and let's, let's again, keep, keep this going for a few more minutes. But then, but then recognize that we may have some things, we fill in the gaps and come back and look at this one more time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, I wanted to talk about um seventy four seventy five. Which is supplementary road assistance on this. Now, set, that's what we usually had put for FEMA stuff, seventy four seventy five. And what what's interesting about this, right, we had budgeted two hundred and six thousand dollars, and that was what I think. We were expecting to the Pike Road, and like, there were somehow, there was a, there was a conversation about. We have to do Pike Road. Um, so we put in, we budgeted to cover that cost, but it might have been paid in the last fiscal year, I'm not sure. And so the fact that there's nothing listed here as spent, I'm like, I don't think that that's.
So Patty, Patty's comment here.
Mm-hmm.
And and I didn't get a chance to talk to her. It says should have entered two hundred and six thousand to show the obligation, but I'm not sure, so I'll have to talk to her.
Okay.
About that, so that's on her mind, and I, and 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 I have to see all of this stuff because we're doing everything for the audit, so.
Yeah.
I have to have, you know.
Yeah.
Seats, um.
Awesome.
So I'll talk to Patty.
Okay, and then, um, the, and and so that was, um. That was just kind of as far as my comments and questions on that, and then there's one that I have on the height, on the, um. Uh, other one, and I think I was actually working from paper this time.
Okay, so Mike, did you have anything else on this before we switch over to select board?
Only thing, um, it's more for hearing a visitor as well.
Well, we could, with with, yeah.
You can go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only thing I'm gonna say is, uh, it's like I was preaching last fall, sooner than later for insurance stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna start doing, beginning June, beginning of July, start looking into that stuff.
Yeah, we do, we need to, and yeah, and I was thinking, I'm looking at Randy because I'm thinking, like, one of the things that we just need to do is just, like. Come up and talk to you guys and say, here's.
Not only that, have someone call DLCT or call, you know, whoever, and cause they used to, years ago, they'd come down and.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is how this works.
And they're, yeah, and they're not necessarily gonna, gonna know what the increase is, but I think.
No, but it'll give you a ballpark, you know, if you if you got Blue Cross Blue Shield now, which they call it platinum, which I think is a joke, but. Uh, you pay whatever, a hundred and whatever thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And you can see that you got a, a this plan, and it's this much cheaper now, it.
Yeah.
Pretty good chance, when it comes time, it's gonna be that still percentage cheaper, you know, give you a ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, every year, basically, the plans that we've looked at, the last, that last time, they, every plan went up. Almost the same percentage across the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like, I know for a fact, there's other town, like Wilmington has a a a plan where they have a higher deductible. But they save so much money that they put money into a percentage of the deductible.
Yeah, and and other towns have have done that, um, high, high, um.
I know Marlboro just did in the last year, too, same thing.
Well, that that was different, cause I looked into that, and you guys didn't like that idea.
Yeah, that.
That was a, um.
Like eighty percent of your friggin' office.
No, no, one of them.
One visit.
One of them is, uh. Shoot.
There's like.
Yeah, HSA and HRA.
Yeah.
And the one they have is one that apparently the town had at one point in the past.
Yeah.
Wilmington has the same thing, they have a plan, and then they have an HSA that they put percentage of whatever they decide for a deductible.
Yeah.
You know, so that that's only, I'm not an insurance guru, but from what I understand from talking to a few other towns. I think that's the only way you're gonna really save some money is go to a different plan and have an HSA with. That established that way.
Yeah, cause that's, that's what ha- happened with. The school. Um, the.
The district.
Yeah, the district where Steph works, they ended up having to, they they switched to one of those, but they ended up having to switch also to the. The gold plan. Just because the cost had gone up so much that it was, so they do have a.
So they went gold plus HSA?
I believe so, yes. I get HSA.
Cross either, I mean, there's MVP, there, there's all kinds of different ones you can look at.
Yeah, I think there's a couple, so we can, we can look at what we had last, um, time and have, and start to have these conversations, because again, I think no matter what we do. Um, some, some of this is gonna go back onto the employees, one way or the other, right? So we have that five percent additional that we put in to the insurance, which is, was nowhere near the eighteen percent jump we saw last year. And then we put whatever we did for the wage increase, you know, we can move things back and forth between those two, if that makes sense, but. But chances are pretty good that that this is something we have to, we have to just address, because, yeah, when you are spending fifteen. Thousand dollars a month to ensure.
Well, on the other hand, you gotta think, too, your employees, they gotta do what they gotta do to make eleven.
Of course, of course, and we.
On the end of the day.
It's, it's absolutely a balance that we have to, we have to figure out how to make it work for both. The employees and the taxpayers, and and we know that we did not budget for another eighteen percent increase, cause we didn't.
And that's why I'm saying, you know, we'll get into it sooner than.
Yeah, 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 okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, so on to the select board, select board one, and the one comment that I had here, um, cause it jumped out at me. The one comment that I have here has to do with the overage in the. EOC emergency supplies and expenses. So this is sixty two sixty two. Um, I know that I've been freaking out because we keep getting like, hey, don't you wanna spend another two thousand dollars to maintain? A, um, the generator at the school, we've, we've done repairs for each of the three generators, we did not budget nearly enough for this for next year. But we're already over on this one by fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty nine dollars. And I don't, I think we had a grant for, we had a brick grant. Which back there, I guess it says that we received.
Ten thousand dollars allocated but not received, and then evidently it was received se- in September.
Yeah, so how that worked then is we paid, we paid Wyndham Regional Commission, that would be in this fiscal year, by the looks of it, right? Nine twenty twenty four is this.
This year, okay.
Fiscal, so we, we paid, we paid that out, we might have had a percentage that we had to pay on top of it, and then we received back sixty nine seventy one. Um, so I'm guessing that that's what that was, cause I think that they had, like, it's eight or nine thousand dollars maybe from. Wyndham Regional Commission managing us getting that hazard mitigation plan up to date. By getting that hazard mitigation plan up to date, we are eligible to, for higher reimbursements for the FEMA stuff, right? So it's gotta pay, gotta pay to play on that one. So it's up to date, but we need to kind of, you know, look at those things and and review them at some point, too. So that was, that was my last comment and question, but it kind of gets back again to that, that worksheet that we looked at at March fifth, uh, March first, twenty twenty five, where I was like. Here's all the money we didn't expect that came in, here's all the money that we spent that we didn't expect to spend, how are we doing? On those issues, because it still feels like we haven't fully covered, covered that town garage roof. And again, if it's easiest to, you know, to mentally shove the gravel to cover that, I don't know. And we have these other things that may still come in, and we may get thirty thousand dollars, you know, at the last minute. So tho- those were my comments, and thank you for, and for working with Patty, I know you had to do this stuff anyway. But.
Yeah, no.
It's a kind of, it's a kind of checkpoint that we should be doing probably at least twice a year to say, like, how are we doing? Are we overspending, are we?
What's the bottom line?
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll talk, I'll talk to Patty and. We'll circulate something, excuse me, back to the board for, you know, kind of no comment conversation, it was.
Yeah.
This is what.
Yeah.
Patty said, I'm gonna stop sharing or unless.
That's great, yeah, and do, um, do you know if Mike ever got a refurbishment quote on the grader? I know he was looking.
I thought we did, hold on.
I thought they looked at it, but I don't know if they ever got an answer.
I know they actually charged us some money for the time that we did this.
So we went to equipment schedule.
Charges a couple thousand dollars.
For, we received a quote. For four hundred and forty five thousand in June twenty three, was that the refurbishment?
No, no, that's a new grader.
And the replacement was due, okay, so I will add here. We'll just put a note to myself here.
Cause I read, I read across some old notes before. That we actually had the grader, maybe back when we bought it, that we were expecting it to last twenty years, not fifteen.
A part of also what we're, I'm learning, going through the audit, going through how we have like our expected life, one of the, one of the things. That, um. A- and we'll have to have this conversation close when we get in into budget, but there's depreciable assets and certain things are, you know. Up to ten, you know, up to ten, some are fifteen, we may say, look, we have a useful life of seven for our vehicles. Because that's, we wanna turn them in, but we may be depreciating them on ten years, the reason being, well, we don't know if we're gonna get rid of it, and then, you know, so. I'm having those conversations kind of real time, or about to have those conversations real time with the auditor.
Okay.
So ideally, if I I would like some of these charts to reflect depreciable value. Because it it just makes doing the audit. Easier, we can hide it, I don't care if it, you know, but but I I am absolutely, uh, you you're. Hang on to your seat, because when Nemret comes through.
Yeah.
Hang on to your seat, it is very, very different, the way we're gonna be doing things is different, right now, we do things that are. You know, the the department is highway, or the department in our minds.
Yeah.
The department means different things for them, but if you've got highway, you've got select board, you've got, let's just say wages.
Yeah.
Or insurance.
Yeah.
Or, um, paying for internet, right? So it goes to highway, but. The way they wanna do it, and we do it by function.
Yeah.
The way they wanna do it is by line item, and then we have to designate separately, oh, that's highway, that's. Listers, that's something else, so. It's, uh, we what, we we've done the top down, which basically replicates what we've got.
Yeah.
And it doesn't get us where we need to go, so now what we have to do, which I think is just part of the process of a conversion, now we're doing bottom up.
Yeah, same.
So. We're all gonna have some different things to work with, Patty's gonna have to work with it differently, me as a board are gonna have to work with it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, just, I think the biggest, for me, the biggest mind shift is, is to some extent, is away from that. Do we have enough cash to get through the end of the year, right? It's more that, now we can afford things, now we cannot panic because we just know that. know that that's covered, it's just gonna be in July or
The conversion, the conversion is a heavy, doing the conversion to get there is a, is a real heavy lift. Um, and next time in all of our next lives, don't anybody sign up to do an audit and a conversion at the same time. Next, next time anybody gets to do
What kind of cookies do you like most? That's what I heard right there. Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut this down.
Awesome. So the only other thing we have on our agenda for tonight is hearing of visitors, are there any other visitors who would like to speak?
You got any left? We got Emily and we got Lori, and I'm good, and I'm gonna sign out so that I don't have
I think it's all, everybody here is directly here.
Well, the only thing I wanted to say was, um, and I guess we can maybe put it on next week's agenda, I hope to have more information on the MRRP. Um, you know, I've been doing a little homework, um, Emily and I sent, uh, we both sent an email to Tristan and we're not, we haven't heard back. So I think I'm just gonna, you know, make some more calls and try to get all the information I can, um, without his help, cause I'm not sure, I'm not sure what's going on with that, but.
And I, I know I threw a bunch of stuff over the wall, too, and, um, you know, again, uh, feel free to ask me, and I'll probably say, I don't know, let's figure it out together, um, but that's, that's fine, and, uh, you know, basically, um, uh, I think maybe Mike McConnell at the Wyndham Regional Commission might be a good point person to just say, I don't think we're behind with that rant in any way, but I do think we need to start to get to a point where we're asking for those bids to come in, you know, for the heater, uh, the oil heater or whatever, so.
Do you know the assess, original assessment for the garage, did efficiency Vermont do that assessment?
I don't recall who did the energy audit, and I, like I said, I looked quickly through my email and I did not find an electronic version of that energy audit. Um, there might be a paper copy here, I haven't run across it recently.
I thought I sent you something, Lori, did I, did I think I sent you something in my head and I didn't? I, cause I came across the original assessment in my files.
Um, geez, I thought I read through everything you sent.
Maybe I found it and thought I sent it like a big dummy.
I knew Mike McConnell, um, was the person to talk to also, um, I know we need, I need to, I guess I need to sign the affirmation of use funds form.
Did you, did you reach out to them to confirm that that was the case?
No, but I'm gonna talk to Megan Fuller, uh, she's the person who I need to send that to, so I'm thinking that. Cause I, I'm gonna touch base with, with all of these people, just to reiterate what I think I know and to make sure I'm thinking along the, the correct line.
Yeah, so back in, and this is what might have been what I sent you, there's, I have an email from Tristan dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Where it just says, dear select board, we've just received the Halifax Energy Assessment Report, see below, oh, there it is. We forward this to you.
I'd love it if you forwarded it to me and also
I will send it to everybody.
Did you send it to me and I missed it, or is it?
I thought I did, but I'm gonna resend it to the select board and I will send it fully also to you, that goes to Randy.
Where's the date in that email?
I think I said four sixteen twenty-four. Four sixteen twenty-four.
And does anybody know, have, did you hear any talk, um, it seems like the firehouse might also benefit from this, did anybody hear any talk?
This is only for town-owned buildings, they are not a department or really connected to the town, other than we do pay for their insurance, they are a private non, nonprofit entity, and so no, none of, none of this money would be spent on their
I did see that it was on a, a list, it was on a list. Uh, that I was reading, what's, what's eligible? I'm not saying ours necessarily, in general, it seems, it, it, it's what I read, it said that some of they could be eligible for money to fire, fire departments. So I would ask, I'll call somebody and ask, but, um.
Yeah, I actually, don't bother, because they are not a town department. Own fire department, that would make sense, but we, I, I just don't wanna take responsibility for their building. Um, cause we don't own it.
Yeah, and I think it was agreed upon in the beginning that we were going to, all this, all this funding was gonna be used for the town garage.
Yeah, and I think there was the explicit, like, these are the pieces that we are gonna get, which included weatherization of the door, fixing the crack, air sealing that crack, and then the, um, boiler replacement.
Not an ADA ramp, did I read that somewhere?
So we can spend up to twenty percent of the grant on ADA, um, improvements. Um, but it sounded like that was an up to percentage, and the, the, the one thing that we do is like, we have an understanding that that might be, um, the best thing to spend that money on would be a ramp at the back. I don't know that there's any hard and fast requirement that we do that.
To me, that didn't have anything to do with the energy efficiency, that's why I was just
It, it kinda has to do with grant conditions, right? It has to do with what they steer you to do. To make the buildings as accessible as possible, so we can wait for that report to come back, I would say. Um, before we, before we do that, um.
And the twenty-eight thousand and change that I see has been designated to us, that other, uh, grant. Um, I didn't know if that, if you guys knew if that was some kind of an estimate for like the boiler work, or, or maybe you don't know. You know, this, uh, that mini grant, the four thousand was one, the initial grant, I believe.
Yeah, and it was, it was probably, um, embedded in that twenty-eight thousand. I think what we actually have available right now is twenty-four. Um, and there was a specific list of how it was to be expended. Um, let me see if I can dig that out.
And Lori, let me know if you do, did not get the email with the, um, assessment from a year ago.
You mean initially, or you mean right now?
I just sent it, I resent it, out to the whole board, so. There should be a couple of attachments.
Okay, yes, alright, I don't remember seeing them, so.
Okay, I probably
Thank you, thank you. Well, with everything you got going on, that's understandable.
I know, I found something like that. Okay, so we'll put MRRP update on the next agenda as well.
And Patty, if you've had, heard anything, you probably haven't either, but you'll let me know, I'm sure, and not Patty, Emily.
I'm saying yes for her. Hey, guys, I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment with the just a two-hour meeting.
Oh, oh, yes, um, I'm, I'm so excited, I forgot. Move that we adjourn.
I move, yes. Say goodnight, all those in favor say aye.
Goodnight. We're headed home tomorrow.
Oh, do you? Alright, it's a long drive.
We'll be, we'll be back Saturday. Alright, guys.
Thank you.
And it is seven fifty-nine PM, so, alright, I'm gonna stop the recording.
Night, Emily.
Night, everybody, thank you.